And we'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition of moving our geothermal system HVAC, our HVAC replacement to the top. We have Dustin here right now.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Dustin, you want to just give us a quick update?
We're about halfway done for the second floor. We're down to the first floor just because of things going on on the second floor this week, so we're gonna be on the second floor and probably be in some people's way, but we'll try and look through everybody and if you got any, cause any issues, just let us know, so.
Good.
That's about it for now.
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And you guys have, I mean, it's been, we've told you before, but you're doing a great job working with departments, working around schedules, and it's greatly appreciated.
Just like I said, just let us know.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
You want to stick around for the other two here?
Yep.
What do you mean the other two?
The geothermal system HVAC.
Oh, okay. We'll go ahead and take action then on the system, the HVAC replacement project, as far as the system that we're gonna be going with. So, is there comments you guys would like to make or motions?
I'd like to make a motion to utilize the geothermal system for the upcoming HVAC replacement project for the courthouse and the administrative building.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
By doing this, we're increasing it by the total dollar amount, so right, just under $100,000. But I believe it's well worth it. Dustin, again, you were in the meeting. Can you give a little update on the benefits of the geothermal?
Basically, with the air-to-air, the design temperature is negative 17 for this area, and when we, it doesn't happen very often, but just last week it got down to well below that, and the system, if it went air-to-air, shuts down. Not gonna happen very often, but there is a chance it could happen. With geo, you're using the heat from the ground, so you have constant 50 to 55 degrees, so you don't run that risk of shutting down. The geo field is there for up to 100 years, is what it, its life expectancy on it, so it's there for future systems also. Yes, would be my thing on that, so.
Okay.
And the efficiencies?
What's happening?
The efficiency of using geothermal.
Oh, efficiencies are better also. That would just basically mean smaller equipment. It's a better system, I would say.
And the rebates from the utility provider would be variable depending on either air-to-air or the geothermal, but would likely be significantly better with the geothermal.
Better, yes. Yep, higher efficiency equipment, you're gonna get a better rebate.
Rebate.
Better rebate.
That would increase the return on, it would shorten the return on investment, potentially.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dustin.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, why don't we go ahead and do the approval of the partial payments for the replacement project? We have, I think there's three.
The first one was already paid, so it would be, I would make a motion to approve partial payment number two and partial payment number three.
Okay. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
On partial payment two, it was paid back in 1-9 of 2019. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other, the number three would be paid on today.
How much was the second payment?
Um, the second payment?
Eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Eighty-seven thousand, three seventy-five?
Yes. Donna, I can give you these papers when they're done.
And number three was 335,314 dollars and 72 cents.
Okay. So, shall we, we'll go back up to the?
We need to approve that. We have a motion.
Oh, we have a motion in a second, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. Go back up to the top, approval of minutes.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from January 23rd, 2019, and February 1st, 2019, as provided.
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of claims for payment, January 30th and February 6th.
I'll move to approve claims for payment of January 30th, 2018, and February 6th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Utility permits and secondary roads. Pardon? Yes.
It seems like you quite often have a claim for payment in here.
Mm-hmm.
What are they for?
So, I travel to Nevada for, I'd have to look at what the payment was, but for mental health board meetings, hazardous materials board meeting, and then my mileage. I do my mileage monthly, so.
Well, I've noticed that you quite often have a claim for payment, but the other two seem to do this without them.
I haven't turned mine in yet.
You do yours about once a year. I do mine whenever I get time to sit down and do it, so. But I don't have the mileage, he does, because I live just a few blocks away, so.
Well, I don't report my mileage for here, but my meetings are Hampton, Iowa Falls, Nevada, Waterloo.
And I have one monthly one in Marshalltown, which has been canceled due to weather for a couple months, and I have one quarterly in Webster City, so it just kind of depends on which boards you sit on, that type of thing, and which meetings or trainings you attend for expenses.
I remember when we were working and we did something like this, we had to turn in expense sheets. Does that have to be done here too?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's what's turned in, in order to get paid. Right.
And do you also have to turn in some kind of proof that you were there?
Yes.
Such as?
The actual receipts.
No, I mean certificate of completion.
Well, we don't, there's a lot of things that don't even issue those.
Or road calls.
Yeah, I mean, if you would look at the minutes, I know we don't turn that in, but if you look at the minutes from Central Iowa Community Services, or Second Judicial District, or North Iowa Response Group, then, yeah, then it would be on their meeting minutes.
I just simply asked because, well, 2000, when I looked at it for this year, and then I started looking back to last year, it was well over $3,000. So, I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, so utility permits and secondary roads.
Well, you can imagine how busy we've been lately, yeah. Yep, I don't think there's anything to say. We have second spring now, Mother Nature's fun. There's some utility permits there, and that's for our utilities for the bridge south of town, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I recommend they get approved today.
All right. And whether today is gonna get worse as the day goes on, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, prepare yourselves for tomorrow morning.
Okay. Thanks for the good word. Okay, we have a motion on the utility permits.
I'll make a motion to approve utility permit 2-6-19A and 2-6-19B.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say?
Is this that one, Taylor, that you're, oh, God, how did you look at it? Taking out a bridge and putting in a box?
No.
Thing?
No, this is on 260th over Beaver Creek. It's a bridge being replaced at the bridge.
Beaver Creek, Beaver Creek, Beaver Creek, 260th.
Pass United suppliers.
Okay, gosh, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Approval of the contract for D-65 and S-57 paving project.
Yes, so this is our big HMA project from New Providence going south of the county line, and then to Iowa 65 as well. We had three very competitive bids, so this is a pretty good number, the 3 million. It's a little bit higher than we wanted, but you get what you get with the oil prices. It was within 100 grand of Bruce's estimate, so I can't complain about that.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
It's with Manats out of Brooklyn.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the D-65 S-57 paving project.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, review and consider Iowa DOT agreement 2019-C-056.
So, I don't really know what the DOT was doing south of Hubbard last year on 65. They're doing some experimental stuff, but now they're going to repave it next summer already. So, this is kind of their little agreement. They've been doing with this every time they pave, where they pave out into the gravel roads, you know, 75 foot. I think it's a great thing to do, so if our portion is only 68 grand, say we do it, yeah.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the Iowa DOT agreement 2019-C-056.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Doug, is it all right if we move you down further?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we'll skip to the change of status for conservation.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Danita Wheatley. She's been hired as an interpretive park ranger at the rate of $18.27 an hour, effective February 11th, 2019.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
I'd make a motion to approve the pay increase for Martin Steiner, who's a park technician, to the rate of $14 an hour, effective, looks like February 1st, 2019.
Okay. Second?
I will second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Change of status for the sheriff's office.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for John Lippman. He's a deputy. It's a resignation, left employment with Hardin County to work for the Iowa State Patrol.
I'll second that.
Effective 2-7 of 19.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
I wish him best of luck, but aye.
Okay, appointment of township clerks and trustees.
I'd make a motion to appoint the following to Alden Township. Barbara Jass is clerk. Andy Jass is a trustee. Clay Township, Randy Kramer is the clerk. Darrell Fries is a trustee. Concord Township, Gerald Nelson is the clerk. Dennis Newbauer is a trustee. Eldora Township, Harris Haywood is the clerk. Steve Balvance is a trustee. Ellis Township, Mike Brewer, clerk. Lynn Lee as a trustee, and Harold Barr as a trustee. In Etna Township, Delbert Crymeier is the clerk. Barbara Crymeier as a trustee. In Grant Township, Marie Newbauer is the clerk. Steve Martin as a trustee. Hardin Township, Carol Banner is the clerk. Brandon Piper as the trustee. In Jackson Township, Kay Frauning is a clerk. Elaine Ferricks is a trustee. In Pleasant Township, Amy Ferris is the clerk. Roger Zeisman as the trustee. In Providence Township, Ally Steiner as the clerk. Steve Perry as a trustee. In Sherman Township, Chastity Rungy as a clerk. Jeff Drake as a trustee. In Tipton Township, Danielle Houston as the clerk. Jeff Cook as a trustee. And in Union Township, Janet Johnson as a clerk. John Johnson as a trustee.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Certificate of Appointment for a deputy in the recorder's office.
I'll move to approve the certificate of appointment of deputy recorder's office, Cheryl Lawrence.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the auditor's monthly report.
I will make a motion to approve the auditor's report as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Set time and date for fiscal year 2019-20 budget hearing.
I'll move to table this.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Pardon?
Is the budget not ready yet?
No, it doesn't have to be approved until March 15th, and we're still in the process of working on that. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Discussion of Green Belt Home Care budget request with possible action. We've spoken with county auditor. We've just had some new discussions within the last day or so on this, as far as another option. So, I personally am not really ready to act on this yet. We need to do a little more investigating. Possible possibility of a 2080 gives us a different budget source to work this with.
I would like to make a suggestion that we meet February 14th with Heather Bombey, our regional consultant, and see if we could set up a time and actually have a QA with what other counties do and the best way to transition, since she's been through this process before, if that's even a possibility, so we can all answer our questions.
So, that'd be next Thursday?
Correct. She will be at our office next Thursday, so we can at least talk about all the options of the budget.
Yeah, we, does that work for you guys? Would put that on our agenda?
Yep.
Yep.
And I will get you a time.
Yep. Pardon?
I'll get you a time.
Okay, okay.
That she's available.
Julie?
Is there like a specific request, a dollar amount? Is this added funding? What is it? Is it for an amount?
Not at this time. That's what we need to have further discussions on. It's more or less the benefits for RNs especially, but for employees, due to the turnover in their, in the RNs for Green Belt Home Care, that they can leave, go to the hospital or go elsewhere, and the pay is, I understand the pay is in the ballpark, but the benefits, they are, the employees are required to pay a good share of the benefits, which cost them a lot less somewhere else, so that's what's kind of being discussed.
We're trying to increase our benefits.
Is there a neighborhood dollar amount for this?
We have two owners that were in discussion, so there isn't a dollar amount at all, because the county has 75% ownership, and the city has 25% ownership, and so both parties have to come up with what are they willing to do, and we haven't got to that point yet.
Right.
That's why it was on the agenda today for discussion.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll get it on our agenda for February 14th, and it looks like we're pretty much open, so if you want to just get a time to Nancy, and that'd be great.
Sounds good, I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. APTA Health Insurance Deposit.
I'd make a motion to approve the expression of intent to implement APTA Health program.
I will second that with the, there's corrections on the original.
Correct. This is more or less, we will be looking into this APTA healthcare coverage again this year compared to, and compare it to Blue Cross Blue Shield coverage. We looked into this a couple?
Last year.
Last year. And last year, it wasn't going to be as much of a benefit to the county to switch on this. And what this is approving today would be, that the county would be depositing $4,500 at the beginning of the implementation. It says if the stop loss is uncompetitive or unable to be secured, the client will be under no obligation to implement the APTA Health program. So, just, we just are going through the process again of comparing health insurance benefit package, and we have to put $4,500 down to do that research, and which will be refunded in the end if we go with it or not.
Do you expect big changes to go, or to see a benefit to change?
Um, it, there's a difference in, how do you want to explain? Like, as far as visits, coverage, that type of thing, not a lot in the, I mean, we can pretty much set up what we want for coverage again, I think. It's just a different way of handling your healthcare. It would be more, take more input and time from the employees, to an extent. If you go in and you have, if we have our wellness done and they get results and they see, oh, Renee McClellan had an elevated this or that, they have a team of people that consists of nurses, whatever, people in the industry, that is assigned to our employees to help, help them through those life occurrences, could be cancer, could be whatever.
The stop loss was a kicker last year, wasn't it?
Yes, yes. And we, I think they did make a comment that this, that has had a change in it, so the stop loss isn't as.
And is it United Healthcare? Like, what is the actual insurance itself?
It'd be United Healthcare.
I don't think we have a name yet.
Isn't it? Or is it?
It's for them to find.
Wasn't it last year? Last year's?
Last year's United Healthcare.
Last year's, mm-hmm. But no, that's what, this is all the research.
We're not restricting them to just the Blue Cross Blue Shield. They can look at any.
Right, right. They go out and look at all the healthcare fields or providers. So, this is just kind of the research going into whether or not that would prove beneficial for us or not, so.
Whoever they come up with, I guess I think it would be a good discussion, like even with Doug and myself, to see what the reimbursement, or what kind of, how that works. Because if we pick a company that we know that isn't beneficial to our county for even the hospital, or for Green Belt, or I think that would push us backwards.
Okay. Yes, I mean, yeah, you're welcome to attend. I mean, especially since Green Belt is covered by our insurance, it will affect your employees too.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, this is just for the research end of it in the beginning, so. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Recorder's monthly report.
I'll make a motion to approve the recorder's monthly report as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Doug, you have information or presentation for us from Hanson Family Hospital?
Yeah, thank you so much. For a few minutes, it's really an update, and it starts here with the question, is the hospital struggling? We'd say no more than any other rural hospital, and we have a lot of great things going for us. Couple quick facts. The bond requirement, as people are wondering, requires 60 days of cash, and we have 211 days cash. So, one of the things we wanted to show and let people be aware of, can I stand up just for one second?
Oh, sure.
I don't know how people do this, but I.
No, you don't, don't worry about that.
You want to invite the speaker.
Okay. But anyway, one of the things we wanted to share is the basic nuts and bolts, which is over time, the cash position at the hospital. The other lines you see on here is the auditors, who we use out of Minnesota, who have 100 and some clients, and you can see how we compare to 100 and other some clients. So, our cash position compared to other facilities is very favorable. The other thing I wanted to share by way of introduction is what they call days and accounts receivable, or working to do a good job with accounts for the people who use the hospital. And Hanson is the blue line, and in this case, lower is more favorable for folks. I just wanted to show you the trend in days and accounts receivable, which means we're making great progress relative to 100, at least, other comparable hospitals in our account management, trying to make things simpler and easier for the patients who are there. Couple other things. Last year, the Iowa rural hospitals lost an average of 1.5% from operations. Hanson Family Hospital has had a positive bottom line last year, 0.7. So, our operating performance, in fact, exceeded the average rural hospital. Now, having said that, managing staff, we're using group purchasing, careful expense control. We're doing everything we can, and in fact, you may or may not know this, but we've been cutting expenses off the budget at the clip of 200,000 a month. But here's the point. We can't keep up with the insurance reimbursement declines, with the out-of-control drug costs, and in fact, those are dropping at the rate of about 250,000 a month. So, it's very difficult to keep up. So, today's report for a few minutes, if y'all don't mind, is really for the same reasons. You get a mammogram, you get a colonoscopy, and do other preventive things. We're trying to be very forward-thinking here. We're living in the future to make sure that we solve problems before they're a huge crisis. We decided to root the story in this report for the next few minutes in the words from a patient's family, and these are the exact words of a letter received not long ago. "Losing a parent is one of life's hardest experiences. Pain control and easing breathing was the priority to make sure there was death with dignity. The hospital team showed such a welcome approach, such compassion. We're extremely grateful and can't imagine having gone through this without the hospital." One of the points we wanted to make in our report today is the hospital does good, and it's good economics for all of us in the county, and that's the combination of our report. One thing I wanted to show is, as a reminder, is the location of hospital employees. Now, every red dot actually isn't an employee, but this is the county map, and as you can see, we have employees pretty much across the county. In the end, Hanson Family Hospital, between full and part-time employees, has about 225 people. About 170 of them are full-time, and this is where our friends, neighbors, and people live across the county. The other key thing to report, as far as generating our story, is the patient's words. We can't imagine what we would have done without the hospital. We wanted to talk a little bit about the economic impact of these employees that are all over. And so, we interviewed some of our employees. It's a day in the life of an employee somewhere in Hardin County, and it goes like this. One of our employees, here's an example. Imagine some folks and an employee with a daycare age child and a second grader. So, here's what her life looks like. She gets up in the morning, she drops off a child at home. home daycare. Eventually, she'll get a bill from that home daycare and leave some money with that home daycare provider, who will pay for helpers and pay for food and other daycare supplies, and taxes on the house that the daycare provider lives in. She drops her child off at second grade, supporting the elementary school, and the taxes do it. Makes a quick stop by the coffee shop and gets a latte, and leaves some dollars there, who will then pay their employees, who will then pay their taxes. Goes to work, and while they're at work, they're going to get their oil changed. And in fact, they'll come and do that, pays the local shop. Runs out to lunch, grabs a sandwich, buys the sandwich, has to get her hair cut, stops for the local beautician, leaves some dollars there. In fact, quickly then stops for a birthday present for a friend. As you can see, what we're trying to demonstrate is the dollar flow throughout the community. Finishes her workday, picks her child up from the elementary school, goes to daycare, stops by the grocery store, spends some money to help support the clerk, has to stop for quick gas. Gas is up, goes home. This particular case happened to be, given our freeze thaw, gets home, has a roof leak in the kitchen, calls a local contractor, which will be more dollars. The only audience participation I have is, as I was kind of demonstrating, where these folks drive our economic way of life, is kind of a pop question. For every dollar spent by employee, studies show it generates $3 in activity to preserve our way of life. Question is, what is the annual payroll at Hanson Family Hospital? Anybody have a guess? $9 million. The point of the whole conversation is, you take that $9 million, you multiply that times two or three, it's an 18 to 30 million dollars flowing through all of our hands to support our schools, our churches, and our way of life. And we wanted to report it that way, because that's the day in the life of a Hanson Family Hospital employee. So, we mentioned that simply because it's the gem and the engine that we all want to protect. And so, what we're recommending today, and just offering up for your consideration, what we're trying to do is have all of us realize, we all have a tie to it. It isn't necessarily something separate that's up there or sideways. We're looking for help, kind of some of the headwinds, asking people to patronize, understanding some of the insurance challenges, understanding the expense challenges, and understanding our role as the economic engine to our way of life. Couple other things going on, just wanted you to be aware of. Our physician recruitment continues. We are in active conversations with three physicians. In fact, continue to have business, which is exciting. We also wanted to comment on a program and let people be aware, Senior Life Solutions is a terrific program. It is for folks who are 65 and older, who might desire some mental health support on an outpatient basis. You can call us, and that has been a growing program. And as usual, you'll hear me ask and request that all of us live a preventative life regarding mammography, colonoscopy, wellness visits. What that does is allows us to do good through our healthcare, and it's good economics for all of us. So, key messages of the day, our bond covenants are very well-covered. We're coming at this from a preventative approach, trying to avoid a crisis. And our economic impact here, we think, is the engine that literally drives our way of life in rural Hardin County. And I'll stop there, so I don't go on too long. You can answer any questions, and I just look for a chance to, you know, come back on regular reports with just different twists of what we're doing at the hospital.
Donna?
Part of the goal is to keep our young people, our young families, in the county, which is becoming increasingly more difficult to do. Is Hanson Hospital planning on bringing back its maternity section anytime at all?
One thing we learned in that is, we're not necessarily sure that drives bringing in families. Studies, that's a question people have. No, we do not have the capacity or the economic ability right now. We don't have the growth of OB on the radar on a growth form basis. The strategy that the folks are thinking is, a strong hospital with all the other services are what will attract people to jobs and other things, but we do not have that on the radar.
Okay, and I think, Doug, you said you'd be around for a few minutes. If, if people have questions after the meeting, they can get together with you. All right, good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Down to other public comments. Okay. Any other business? All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.